Let me start. We started with my response. I guess I failed at that. Are you all ready? Angela, are you ready?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the Successor Agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for this Tuesday, March 7th. This is a special strategic planning meeting. And with that, could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Lemus.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sparks.
Here.
Mayor Harvey.
Here.
We'll show Councilmember Rivers is absent.
Okay, thank you for that. And then we will move on to public comment pursuant to the California Government Code Section 54954.3A. Members of the public wishing to address the council may do so at the beginning of the special meeting, and such comments shall be limited to the special meeting topic. And I am seeing no one in the audience here, Kevin. Okay, we have no one on Zoom.
That is correct.
Okay, that will end public comment. We'll watch. And if we need to reopen that, then I'm open to doing that. So with that, we will move on to the first item study session on strategic planning for fiscal year 2023-24. And I am going to guess that Angela is gonna know. Damian, who's gonna start this? Someone will start this.
Yes, I will start it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Can you make that full screen? All right, so before we, before we get going, I just wanted to point out, in addition to the packet material, there was also on Monday, some additions to the packet that were published. One is just this slide deck that you're about to see. The other is an update to the Public Works' proposed projects for 2324. That was, it was noticed, I'll just point out real quick what the difference is before we get into the slides. But it was noticed that the, the hours were calculating wrong on that sheet. So the hours were fixed in terms of the, the time spent on different tasks. And there was also another project that's, I believe it's red in the addition, which was basically an asset. It was the asset management request, unified request tracking that was added. It was an oversight and wasn't published in the initial packet. Okay, so. All right, let's start off with city council goals and objectives. And what was in the packet is every year, we, we go through, we go through these, and these are sort of the guiding principles that we use to put together our work plans. They follow through into the budget. And we review them during strategic planning every, every year to make sure that these are still consistent with where the council wants to, where the council wants to be, both in terms of the goals and the objectives. And I'll just run through the goals. We have five goals. The first is ensuring long-term vitality for the city. In this goal, I won't read through the objectives individually, but basically this is about balanced budget, economic development, preserving infrastructure, and then grants and, and housing and development consistent with the general plan. So basically, all the things that we need as a city to continue to thrive in the future. Goal number two is actively work to mitigate and adapt to the impact of climate change, including wildfire adaptation and preparation in accordance with the adopted city council policies. So climate, an explicit climate change goal, which was more recently elevated from an objective to a goal. Goal three is provide services consistent with best in, best-in-class service levels. And this kind of goes, goes across the breadth of things that we do, including community safety, just high-level core services, emergency preparedness, making sure our regulations are updated and current, and as well as our zoning and permitting and development services processes. And then finally, representing the city in regional-wide issues, and just looking for ways to streamline services, use our resources better through either joint procurement or just better ways of doing things. Goal four is to promote community engagement, to inform and encourage participation in city business. And that, that runs from top to bottom, all the way from our, you know, traditional public information programs to ensure people are aware of what's going on, the regulatory requirements to inform people about programs and projects. And also, a newer one, newer objective was exploring possibilities of incorporating neighborhood-level programming into city activities. And then lastly, this is a new goal, a relatively new goal, is promoting an equitable, compassionate, and healthy community that honors diversity as a source of strength with a couple objectives. And the first is to ensure that all city government operations are inclusive and equitable, fair hiring, promotions, greater opportunities in contracting, and serving our community equally. The other is advancing equity and health in partnership with Kattati residents and stakeholders, other jurisdictions, and non-governmental organizations. So that's just a, an overview of, of our goals and objectives. And at a staff level, we didn't identify anything in particular that needed to be, that we felt at least that needed to be amended or updated. But this is the opportunity for the council to provide us any further direction as we move into 2324 on anything we may want to change. With that, I'll hand it back to you, Mayor.
Yeah, I had a question, since, yes, my first strategic planning. I had a question on, for example, on goal two. And I know there's, there wasn't an objective under there, but I'm not sure what, in what section developing safe evacuation protocols for Kattati residents would be. Because I felt that, I went online and I didn't, there was an evacuation map, but it linked to something else. There was no evacuation map on there. Even though it says that, unless it's linked incorrectly. But I didn't know if we have something like that, or who, or where that would lie in this, in the goals, objectives.
So in terms of, in terms of this document, it's improve emergency preparedness generally, right? And that's under, sorry, goal three, objective, it's 3C. And the, the beet map is almost the same as the evacuation map. So maybe the, I don't, I don't know exactly which, where you're looking, but there is a map that has both the beets and the evacuations on it, evacuation zones on it?
It said evacuation map, and then it went to that neighborhood. It said neighborhood something on there.
Okay.
And I didn't, I guess I was expecting to see a map with evacuation routes or something. And I don't know if that's something that's available.
Sure. So like the city manager said, there is a map of beets, neighborhood beets, the area officers. And then there is an evacuation zone map. But I think you're asking for the evacuation routes, correct?
Yes, I was looking for like a map that showed, you know, the different areas of Kattati, and kind of what routes.
Yes.
I didn't know if that's available, or if that's.
So we don't have that. So we have the, the evacuation zones where you reside, or where businesses are at. So it depends on what emergency it is and where it's occurring? Because we don't, we can't give you a route without knowing that. So if there's a fire on the east side of Kattati, we don't want people, it won't say to go east automatically. So that's not in writing. The, you would receive a NICSOL alert, emergency alerts directing you where to evacuate, which direction to evacuate, if that makes sense.
It was just, like I said, it confused me a little bit, because it said evacuation maps. I was trying to see a map on there, and there wasn't a map. That's, that's what my question was. That, that was one thing. And then I wasn't sure at what point, again, language access would be involved in here, where it says like emergency, improve emergency preparedness. And maybe that's further down than even an objective. But at, at what point would like language access so that more people are aware during an emergency?
It is, I don't believe it's explicitly said, in, at this level. The ad hoc committee did focus on that, and that was one of the recommendations that we've been implementing.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, and we, I'll also take a look at the evacuation maps online, because maybe there's something that's confusing about it, or the link's not working. So I'll make sure that it's working properly.
Well, it sounds like what Sylvia was expecting was, if you're here, this is how you exit. But I get what you're saying. It's really incident-specific. You don't want to give someone a direction to go in if you're sending, if the particular incident would send them in harm's way. So you might send people west if, if the incident is in the east. But you wouldn't really know that until the incident happened. But you don't want people going in that direction. So I think that's what you were, were trying to say, that it's incident-specific. Depending upon what the emergency is, you may send people in different directions. But I think that the point of the map, if I understand it, is to view what your possible exit routes may be. So here's my, you know, I'm in this zone, you know, what, what are my, you know, kind of north, south, east, west ways of getting out of my zone?
And I will say, it's, it's a communication tool, I mean primarily, right? So you say, you know, you can, we can put out stuff on NICSOL or some sort of other sort of emergency communication platform, and see everyone in zone two. And then the, the idea was that there's a way for people easily find out where zone two is. And if they're in zone two, this is what you should do, right? Go, go west, or go east, or go, you know, whichever way, need to evacuate.
And did you have a question?
Yes, thanks. Well, questions, comments, discussions? Is that all?
Go for it.
Great. So I'd like, goal two was, was formed last year by essentially just promoting an objective to a goal. And I think it needs some fleshing out. We need to think about what are objectives, objectives to actually accomplish that. The wildfire preparedness is now in that goal, as well as in objective 3C, and that needs to be a little straightened out, I think. We need to think about whether wildfire preparedness goes under climate mitigation or under core services. I would probably leave it under core services, but whichever.
Yeah, that'd be my preference.
Yeah. And I'm trying to think about what the somewhat more specific goals, more specific objectives that might fit under that goal two. You know, one of them would, would be around city operations, you know, participating in, in Evergreen and replacing, you know, windows to make operations more efficient, operations sort of things like that. But then, similar to goal five, I'd also want some objective about kind of services and how we interact with, with our constituents in the city as a whole, and think about how, how the city might play a role in, in the community preparing for climate change, adapting to climate change. So I don't have good wording, but. Yeah, if other people have ideas, or if they could take back.
Is there something from our climate action plan that we could pull as an objective out of the plan, since we, you know, have that plan? Maybe there's some items in there that we could tweak to fulfill those?
I think that's a good suggestion, yeah. I mean, but basically, the intent is a city-focused one and a community-focused one, or one or more.
Right.
Goals, or objectives, sorry. And, and I will say, you know, given that we don't have exact wording on that right now, I, you know, we'll, we'll make some suggested edits and then come back. You guys can see this again.
Is that okay with everyone?
Can I make one?
Yeah, yeah.
It might also make sense to separate out one goal. There's the internal city goal, trying to reduce our carbon footprint, or whatever we're doing. But then, out of the community, separating out, trying to, trying to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and, and within the, and vehicle mile travel, and things like that within the community. And then also, adapting to the impacts is, seems like a separate objective to me, preparing for extreme weather events. And I guess that's where it gets murky, should wildfires go under this goal or the other one. But drought, extreme weather events, and things that we can expect. That seems separate to me than reducing carbon emissions.
And any programs that we have, you know, implementing any programs that we have? Because we also have some stuff in the general plan, I think, too.
Yeah, some of it's definitely legislative, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I know we've, we've talked about electric reach codes, and that's, that's like an example of a legislative thing that we would do for, like, that would impact the community. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So like I said, all, all, all we, all of us, give those some thought, and we'll, we'll flush it out and bring it back at the next study session. All right. See if this thing's still awake. There we go. All right. So just a quick rundown of, of either what we've done already this year, this fiscal year, it turned into a pretty long list, or what we think will be done with by the end of, the end of this fiscal year. It's either been done, or it's, we think it's going to be done. All right, so this is, this is in the police world, Implement CopLogic. It's a citizen website reporting tool. So it's non-emergency, of course, because it's a web tool. But it's another way for citizens to reach out to our police department and request, request things.
Sorry, Damian, I don't know if you meant to skip slide three, but we're on slide four right now.
Okay, let me finish with this slide, and I'll go back.
I was wondering why I couldn't find what you were, like.
Yeah, sorry about that. Keeping, keeping everyone on their toes. Thanks, Kevin. All right, so we, we are accelerating our file digitization process. So we've done, we did all of our, we've done all of our micro fishes. So that's all done, that's all digitized. Yeah. And, and we're working through a lot of the onsite files, and then we're going to be moving to the offsite files. So we're trying to accelerate that. Just, so it's, so it's just more accessible, both to staff, so we can serve people better when they ask for these things. But also, sometimes we get requests for documents too, from the public, and it just makes them much more accessible. And oftentimes, especially the things offsite, you don't really know what you have, because the inventories are sort of broad. They don't get into a lot of minute, or a lot of the granular detail.
And Damian, won't this digitization, easy for me to say?
It's hard for me, too.
Help with searching, too, because it makes it searchable, whereas right now on FISH, it's not searchable?
Right, yeah. It's all searchable by key, either keywords or just plain text searching. So it's, makes it much more accessible. All right, so we're working on a new legislative management system. That's the system we use to put together agenda items, bring them to council, display them on the, the public side of this, of that is displaying it on the website. So it'll be a new agenda website. Again, on the theme of searching, the system that we're working on implementing is a much better searching tool than the current one, which, quite frankly, is kind of worthless in terms of searching. Updating the city seal. So the council recently saw, you know, some drafts, or some draft versions that we're working on, bringing that forward. This, we got St. Joseph's back. We didn't even know we didn't have it, but we got it back from Caltrans in expedited basis. That was a little fire drill. We're in the process right now of implementing the ad hoc recommendations, equity ad hoc recommendations. And I, there'll be updates on that forthcoming, on where we are with stuff, so everyone knows. We implemented the 2023 building code update. We completed the Vernif ordinance. We completed the Ag ordinance and the Veronda Floody Ranch rezoning. We will, we plan to implement the Reach, Reach Code ordinance by the end of this fiscal year. The council did implement a prohibition on new fuel stations, fossil fuel stations. All right. Can you go back one slide, please? There we go. Okay. So we, by the end of this year, we'll, we'll have done 7.9 miles of roadway. That's actually quite a bit of roadway. So it's about a third of all the streets in Kattati, just in this last fiscal year, will have been reconstructed or rehabbed or preserved. We did the Old Redwood Highway, East Kattati Avenue Traffic Flow Improvement Project. So that's, I think we talked about this at a recent council meeting, but new controllers and detectors for the signals all along Old Redwood Highway, and also all along East Kattati Avenue. So all the traffic signals have those new detectors, and, and many of them have new controllers that were being updated. The Loretto Marsh Pathway and Pocket Park Project, that should be done, well, it's basically almost already done, but there's a couple parts missing. And then we're going to be moving into the landscape piece of that Pocket Park Project. So that should be done by the end of the fiscal year. Hopefully, much sooner than that. West Sierra Avenue Sewer Replacement Project will be done. The West, or the City Hall Civic Center Replacement, Window Replacement Project will be done. The painting work that's going to follow is, is going out to bid here shortly. So that should be done by the end of the fiscal year. Our annual pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements project, we're working on that right now, and expected to probably, getting that together and bringing it forward. So we have, we have a project that we're proposing at. So we have, um, we have a project that, um, we're proposing at, um, this came out of the LRSP, but it's right in, on Valparaiso by Lund Hill and, and Delano Park, right there for pedestrian crossing. And, um, Craig, was there another one that was?
Yeah. We had a study of Valparaiso Avenue and there was the crossing right there at Lund Hill. And then as you approach Old Roadwood Highway, um, the signals are at the opposite corner of the roadway, so it's really not, you have to kind of search for it to see your green light or red light. And then coming back, um, going the other way off of Myrtle to Valparaiso, same thing, that the signal's on the other opposite end. So we're looking at turning those signals around, so it's right there, uh, visible to the drivers. It, you know, these are, these improvements improve the safety, um, for the vehicles. And then if there's a pedestrian that's crossing, that, that, it's all, um, that there's cars not running red lights and all that stuff. And then the prior year, we actually had improvements to the signalization, um, the, the push button. It was, uh, it is, it now speaks. And, and so, um, someone that's, that cannot see, you know, a blind person can then get the, the verbal signals to, to cross. And we have those, those upgrades at the, um, Highway 116 intersection as well. But, but sticking back to Valparaiso, it's a crosswalk and those traffic had.
And it's also a delay, right? And the pedestrian has a delay before the traffic's released in.
Yes, so it gives pedestrians a head start. So they're halfway across the roadway before the green light happens. So drivers can, you know, it's obvious that there's a pedestrian crossing the street rather than just leaving the curb.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Yeah, so this is, I mean, this particular project is the annual, um, at least in recent years, the council has been annually, um, putting some budget aside for smallish projects just to, you know, improve things, um, around town. And then, um, Catati Park, that is, uh, that's well underway and, um, it should be mostly done by April, I believe. And then just waiting on the restroom, yeah, so the restroom will drop in in July.
My recollection is that's coming in one piece, right? It's not, it's gonna be like a drop-in, right?
Yeah, it's like, it's craned in.
It's craned, okay, that's what I thought, but I.
Yep. Um, the housing element, uh, will be done. By the end of the fiscal year. And. We're gonna will it to be true. And then, um, we have, uh, by the end of this fiscal year, we should have, uh, four police EV patrol cars in operation. So that's, um, that's, I'm still not aware of anyone even having one yet around here, but anyway. Yeah. Actually, we had a, yeah, I, yeah, and we've had agencies around the Bay Area and other places call us, asking us some tours of, he gave a tour recently for Marin County jurisdiction to look at the vehicle and the setup. And we had another call from, uh, yeah, it's Emeryville, um, looking at implementing them. So, anyway. Yeah, it's going that way. And then, uh, two of the three admin cars for City Hall are, um, are electric here very shortly. So the only one left is the truck, but, um, that'll be. Yeah, those are expensive though at the moment, but, you know, soon. And it's also low mileage. And then, um, finally, expansion of the safe team, both to SSU, but also expansion in terms of hours. So, um, we're already at 24/7, so that's, uh, that's all good stuff. And, all right, so now I'm really in order now, as you guys are flipping back and forth in the slide deck.
Hey Damian, the, um, I don't know, I can't remember all the categories, but the, um, was it the Helen Putnam Awards that different cities in different categories do? Would the electric police vehicles be something that might be worthy of submitting, um, for an award? I mean, since we're kind of the first in the area and kind of leading the way on that, it might be worthwhile checking into that. Be nice for us to get some.
I can look into the criteria for it, yeah.
Yeah, just a thought. Um, it's at the League of California Cities. They're called the Helen Putnam Awards. And there are different categories and I can't remember all the categories, but.
Um, we'll have, uh, Parklet Outdoor Design Stand, Design Outdoor Dining Standards, sorry, um, here very shortly. Um, you'll soon be seeing in the general plan, annual production reports. Um, or we did that earlier this year, sorry, which was a big catch-up. And then, we're not putting it on here, but you're going to see soon for, uh, 2022, but that's going to be business as usual at that point. But this was a heavier lift this particular year. Consolidating city purchasing, so that, um, that was a, it's been a big internal change in how we, you know, departments manage their own purchasing historically, but we've consolidated under admin services for purchasing for, um, both for, you know, for streamlining, but also, um, a lot of, you know, when we're talking about green procurement or, you know, trying to standardize what we're doing. It's, um, much simpler when it's centralized. If everyone's doing their own thing, it's much harder to kind of keep everyone, keep all the cats going in the same direction. Um, so it's just for efficiency and to try to achieve some of the goals that we're trying to achieve. Um, investment policy program implementation, so, um, that's around the corner. Financial forecasting, right around the corner. Um, La Plaza Park Public Wi-Fi Project, that is underway. Um, uh, just, uh, we did get the, um, the undergrounding done under La Plaza to the park. So it's, um, that part of it is done, so we're good for the road project. And we're still working with Comcast to, uh, finish the rest of the connection. So hopefully, um, the plan is this summer it'll be up and running at some point.
Damian, will we like do posting of signs of what the Wi-Fi network is so people can?
Yeah, I think we'll have to put some, something out there physically on the site saying, you know, Wi-Fi available. And if, um, uh, we haven't worked out exactly what the, you know, what the process will be, but it'll probably be, you know, a splash screen with some sort of accepting, you know, conditions and, and then onto the city Wi-Fi.
Could put a QR code on the whole wayfinding sign.
Yeah, one whole panel, like a giant QR code. All right, and then, uh, so the Sun, so Sunflower Park, it's looking like we're going to get a grant for that, um, that project. So we're still finalizing the details, but it looks like we're getting a grant. And of course, um, this is sort of, we're ending, kind of, kind of, it's kind of the end of it now, but, uh, just navigating COVID, which was continuing to change, um, through the first half of this fiscal year for sure. And it's just winding down now. The last of the requirements.
Quick question about that. So the tents are about to come down, a couple of weeks. And, uh, are we keeping those for special events? Do you even have a place to put them? What, what are you doing with them?
We are, yeah, we're, um, we're packing them up and bringing them to the courtyard, but they're going to be available to rent if someone wants to rent them for special events. Yeah.
Do we could have a good way to clean them off? Pressure wash them or something? They're looking a little ragged.
Yeah, that's part of what we're, when we break them down, we, it's part of what we're doing is cleaning them all and, you know, before you pack them up and store them. Yeah. So hopefully they don't look like they do now. If someone rents them and you like unfold it and like, hey, here's your beautiful, super crappy, dirty tent, you know? Um, yeah. All right, so, um, that, that's just sort of an overview. So it's, there's been a lot going on, even though it seems like, you know, day, day-to-day, you can kind of forget what you did just six months ago, but there's been a lot going on. So it's been a very productive year. And, um, so let's just talk a little bit about what things are looking like as we move into 23, 24. Uh, in the packet, there is statewide, a sort of statewide forecast that HDL does, um, is a, a firm that specializes in, um, uh, a lot of governmental, um, revenue and sort of economic, uh, economic, uh, drivers for local government. And, um, this is just an overview, but I'll just tell you for, um, you know, for Catati, th- these are, like, this, the state overview shows you kind of the pieces that make up, say, a general fund, like, you know, autos and transportation, building and construction. These are the sort of the categories that sales tax is typically grouped in. But overall, the general fund revenue is, um, projected to be basically flat. So, um, we're not, what HDL is telling us with the, you know, and what, you know, kind of what we're seeing too, is that we don't see it dropping, but we don't see it going up. It's going to be kind of flat. And that's not, you know, it, it's not awful news, but it's not great news either, because, um, I can tell you that expenses are not flat. Expenses are continuing to climb. So, um, I think, you know, in the more granular detail here, um, uh, here in Catati, some things we've seen is we've seen like, um, building and construction sort of slow down a bit. Um, you know, during COVID, people were really busy, you know, doing home improvements and that sort of thing. Um, but that's slowing down, uh, general, some general consumer goods. So like people's, uh, in the, in the county pools in terms of the amount of stuff that people order on like online and Amazon, that's slowing down because people are not like sitting home all day ordering stuff. And they're like working in things that distract them from ordering. And, uh, fuel has gone back up because people are moving around again. So food and drugs actually has gone down too. I guess people were medicating more during COVID, so just sort of drug sales were up and now they're kind of back down a bit. And, um, growth is slowing down. So now more than the macro picture, growth is slowing down. Um, unemployment is fairly flat, but still pretty low. And, um, and I think that's, in terms of statewide, that's kind of a decent overview. Um, in terms of property tax, house is the other major piece of the general fund. We're not looking at any significant, um, growth. So sales tax and property tax are basically flat. So the general fund is essentially flat. Enterprise revenues, um, that's our water and sewer systems. Those, those, um, continue to be sort of a CPI-type adjustment, but, um, you know, there are, um, there are still pressures on some of the major expenses there, most, mostly on the water side. The water agency, um, expenses continue to go up. Um, and this particular, this year, it's looking like it's going to be probably a nine or 10% increase. Um, so it's, you know, higher than inflation. Uh, on the sewer side, it tends, it's been tending, tending to go up a lot as well. So they tend to outpace inflation on, on those. And those, on the sewer side, that's, um, the vast, it's significantly more than the majority of our expenses, our operating expenses is the treatment costs. So, um, that's always the challenge. And on the water side, the water agency.
And I can't remember where we're at in our, um, rate, five-year rate structure. Are we in the beginning, in the end?
Three, three or four?
We just, um, adopted a five-year plan and July 1st was the year one.
Last year.
So we're already going to be.
July coming up is year two.
Okay.
So we're going to already be in big trouble?
No.
With that, okay. But don't we anticipate a rough?
We, it's just something we have to monitor closely because if, you know, um, it, it's the overall trend that matters more than the year-to-year. But if we start seeing multiple years of, you know, really high, you know, trends that exceed what we assumed in our rate study, then that becomes a problem.
But don't we generally assume around five or 6%?
Yeah.
Something along those lines?
On the water side, I think it was six.
Yeah.
Six percent, yeah.
So if it's double that, then we're kind of eating into the next year, if you will.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, so like la, but last year, I think it was, it was under 6%. This year it's over. Um, so it, it, it's just something we have to monitor and just.
So might we have to redo early?
If we start stringing like, you know, two or three or four years together like that, then yeah, we could.
Cause I thought last year was, I thought we hit the six or, I thought maybe even we went over.
Yeah.
The city managers, right? We were just under.
Just under six.
The assumed amount.
Okay.
And we assumed six and they came in at five or something.
All right, I couldn't remember. It bounces around.
It'll miss it.
Yeah.
But so long is the longer term.
Right.
We're state, and there's things we can do internally to make that balance out. It's on the water budget, it's a proportion, a smaller proportion of our water budget than the sewer treatment as of the sewer budget. So, um, I think it's like $58,000 more, just rough calculation than what we'd anticipated. So we would just have to absorb that somewhere else.
It is, when you, when you kind of look at doubling, it does give you pause.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's definitely important. I mean, that and, you know, the other factor with water, of course, is just, um, you know, conservation, because there's been many years of conservation. So th- those are all things that we're just having to constantly monitor. And, you know, as we, um, when we get into the enterprise budget, we're going to get into a lot of detail on that, on kind of what that's looking like. But we have to pay, you know, pay close attention to those sort of things so that we adjust if we need to, if it's going to be a problem. But, you know, whether it's the general fund or the enterprise funds, I mean, just a simp, in a real simplistic way, the name of the game is to keep, you know, keep that gap between your expenses and your revenues, because if those lines start crossing, then it's not good. And, and, you know, and the closer they get together, the less money you have to put in reserves, which means that it becomes harder to do infrastructure work. You know, so it's, um, it's all, all about keeping that freeboard, you know, between your expenses and revenues.
And we work so hard to kind of have gradual, um, gradual rate increases, not the bouncing, you know, up and down kind of increases that, you know, make it hard on folks.
Yeah, there was, um, I mean, this was like 10 years ago, but you're well familiar with this.
I'm well familiar.
When the, like, the water agency was coming to us with 20% increases every, yeah, and, and basically telling us, you know, you can like it or you don't like it and we don't care. And it wasn't, it wasn't well received, yeah. So, um, uh, yeah, that, the, the ideal situation is that it sort of runs with inflation. So as people's incomes rise with inflation, that it would roughly kind of match that. But that's, that's the ideal case. It doesn't always work out that way, of course. So, in addition to, um, in addition to that, we have, um, one of the, one of the cost pressures on the general fund, well, in all the funds really, is the liability and property insurance. So that continues to have, um, big increases. And on the, on the, um, property side, so insurance companies, insurers, they, um, they manage risk by insuring in a bunch of different lines, not putting all their eggs in one basket. So they insure in a bunch of different lines and they insure, um, geographically across a lot of different areas. So ideally, you know, so ideally if there's like a giant earthquake somewhere, it's, they're not going to have a giant loss, um, because they have assets or, you know, risk spread in other parts of the world, um, and other types of assets. Um, what's happened in the last, you know, decade in particular, is, um, there's been catastrophic natural disasters throughout the world. And, um, it's kind of broken a lot of their risk models. And so what they've seen, you know, in terms of, um, dependable, expected risk is not materialized because of these large catastrophic losses, whether it's big hurricanes or earthquakes or fires or, or, or whatever. So that's, that's what's driving the, um, property insurance. And, and I should say, if, this should be obvious, I, I, I think you guys know this, but for anyone that's, it's not obvious in the public. We, um, we don't directly insure. We insure through a pool of, you know, 50-something cities. So it's not us individually, it's a large group of California cities. And then liability, so liability has, uh, gone up a lot recently due to, it's what the insurance companies call social inflation. So what they're seeing is, um, when they take cases to, um, to court, um, juries, uh, tend to give big awards, um, because, um, I, I think the perception is among juries that it's insurance companies and so who cares? Like just, you know, give them money, give, you know, give people money. So, um, what had been 10 years ago, like say a $2 million verdict, now what the insurance companies are seeing is, you know, 10-plus million dollar verdicts, um, for the same thing. And it's just societal. And it's just societal changes and how juries, and I guess how juries think. Because when you, when you take things to court, you can't, you can't tell juries how things are getting paid. That's just not relevant to a case, right? So it's, yeah. The reality is that our insurance, the insurance company that we work, our, our pool is seeing very large, and insurance companies generally across the board are seeing very, very large payouts for things that were very small payouts just not that long ago.
And a lot of times that stuff is cyclical too, because then, you know, liability insurance sometimes becomes unavailable. People, you know, can't really afford it and then you'll see it kind of swing another way and so that happens a lot.
There are definitely consolidations, you know, going on in the market, liability and property, they're hard to get. They, like even, even last year, for example, the insurance companies wouldn't final the policy until like literally the day before the fiscal year started because they didn't want to commit to a rate until the very, very end. So it's, it's just really unsettled. It's a really unsettled market. And we're seeing even in our pool, we're seeing more public agencies wanting to join because they're losing coverage for whatever reason. And not because the risk profiles changed, but just because the insurer that they were with doesn't want to insure that line anymore, doesn't want to insure California anymore or whatever the case might be. So anyway, so, and this is what I mentioned before, it's just critical to control expenses and increase revenue trends to meet or exceed our expenses and meet our infrastructure needs. And then as, as the council knows, we are on the general fund side, we're very reliant on sales tax. 50% of the general fund, more or less, is sales tax. So that has its positives and its negatives. Its positive is that it grows quickly with the economy and its negative, of course, is that it drops quickly with the economy. So, you know, we, and this has been a council goal for many years, is just continuing to focus on these three bullets that are listed here. Diversifying and trying to stabilize the, the revenue sources. And then sales tax, that is, that manifests itself in a couple of ways. One is just general diversification, in other words, diversifying a new, you know, new, new types of businesses. And so just general business development in Katati so that we have a brighter, a broader tax base and it's not so focused on a smaller group of taxpaying businesses. Getting into other areas of potential revenue, and that's, that was the cannabis business tax, and we're still pursuing TOT or lodging tax with potential hotel in Katati. And this is, and this is just something we're starting to think about more is even though post-COVID, our gas revenue or gas station sales tax revenue is going back up. In 2022, in California, it was, I believe it was about 20% of new car sales were EVs. So the fleet changeover looks like it's going to happen much faster than people were projecting, particularly light vehicles. So even though it's not an immediate thing, there is a significant amount of sales tax that comes from gas stations in Katati. And so as that starts dropping and going away, that's going to be something that we're going to have to keep a close eye on and manage.
Is there any legislation out there? I haven't really heard of any looking at, you know, kind of replacing that because right now there are gas taxes that help fund our roads. And is there anything out there kind of coming along the line to, to kind of bring that? Because EVs use the road just like gasoline vehicles use the road and it's a little unfortunate at this point. I know why it was done the way it was done to kind of help a contribution to keeping our roads in good shape.
Yeah, so I, I know the state legislature has toyed with it from time to time and it's usually a miles-based tax of some type. I haven't seen anything actually solidify into actual legislation that is going to get approved yet, but it, I, I mean, you're right, something has to be done about replacing that revenue source for street work, for street maintenance.
Right. It would seem like it would ultimately need to be a complete replacement because you also then can't have people being double on there. So if you're going to replace it with vehicle miles traveled or something like that, then you, you kind of need to do that for everybody so that it's not, you know, one group has to pay that and pay the gas taxes too, so.
Yeah. It'll be interesting to see. I, I'm, I feel confident that something is going to happen. How it, how it actually takes form, I don't know. I mean, whether it takes form through the registration process or just through remote telemetry, you know, just tracking miles traveled, I, I'm not sure yet, but something's going to have to happen to replace the, the road taxes that are part of the price of a gallon of gas. Yeah.
Good question. Does that 15% mean that our sales tax from gas station, our taxes from gas sales are 15% of sales tax or 15% of the city budget?
15% of sales tax.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, then just on the expense side, expense and revenue side, I guess, pers, you know, last, last year, the council did a lot to reduce our future pers unfunded liability. But that's just, again, something that as the investment portfolio changes over time, it's continually going up and down. And so it's just something to be monitored and make sure it stays within our policy limits. We have a, we still have a continued significant, you know, need for infrastructure investment. As the council knows, we've been investing a lot in streets and we're probably two to three years away if we, at the, you know, at sort of recent years' investment levels of being kind of done rebuilding all the streets. And then we should be at a much lower level of just maintenance at that point, which, which is good for the general fund because it will free up those dollars for other city priorities that we may have. Parks, we've just started doing park, park work with Katati Park, for example. That's a big, obvious example, but we're, we're going to, you'll see later tonight, we're proposing to, you know, continue to rotate through parks and start bringing them all up as well. So it's not, it's not fast because they're big expensive projects, but, you know, we're methodically getting to them.
But they have a long life when we do them.
They do, yeah.
It's good. It's not like a, you know, only good for a couple of years. They're good for 20, 25 years.
Yeah. Yeah, and so like Putnam is, Katati Park is a pretty good, it's a pretty good park. It's a pretty good, the, like the turf and the general condition of the parks in good condition, it was just the equipment that was in bad condition. That one's going to be in good condition once we're done with this. Putnam is a good example of a park that's, like the playground's in decent condition, but a lot of the rest of it's not in great condition and it's only getting worse. Gophers are kind of running amok over there. So that's been, we've, this year I've been working, we've been working on kind of coming up with a more permanent solution for the gopher issue. That sounded, that sounded bad, sorry.
That sounds ominous, yes.
Yeah.
I'll get worried when I see him with the little Caddyshack hat on and he comes out, he's going out after the gophers.
Yeah, I promise no, yeah, no high-powered, you know, sniper rifles or explosives out there. But, but just, you know, just ways to better control it because what we're doing isn't obviously working, so.
They're really bad this year.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're elevating that internally and trying to get a better way to manage that in a better way, especially after you invest a bunch of money in a park, you don't want to see it get immediately destroyed by a bunch of gophers. So, and then sewer and water infrastructure, that's more condition-based for the most part, but we're, you know, obviously working on that as well. Affordable housing and mixed-use infill projects continue to be the focus on housing for the city. And I'm sorry, I don't have that bottom bullet.
Greenhouse gas reduction measures.
Oh, greenhouse gas reduction measures, yeah, thank you. Yeah.
The thing is going across there.
Yep, yeah, so, and again, that'll, you know, that'll come forward in a variety of ways. I mean, like, you know, purchasing, you know, transition in our fleet, of course, is one way. We talked about the reach codes, that's another way for the community, but we're continuing to explore ways that make sense to further that and try to achieve the greenhouse goals, that greenhouse gas goals that we have as a city. Okay, so I'll just stop there for a second if there's any questions before I get into departments. Just kind of go through some proposed projects that we have in the packet.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so this is just, this isn't necessarily line for line what is in the packet, but I'm just, I'm trying to give you the, the highlights. And so if anyone's not familiar with the, sort of the general layout of this, how these, how these sheets in the packet are set up, you see these effective FTEs, full-time equivalents. Sylvia, I'm sure is very familiar with an FTE, being at the county. But, but basically what this is, is, you know, we have a, we have an electronic time card system, we do our time every two weeks, we track what we do. So when we put these together, we take all of that information from the past year and we push it into this form for this conversation tonight so that you can see how much, how much staff time is spent in different areas. And this is real staff time over the past calendar year. And that, that's, and it's real numbers all the way down to the proposed projects. The proposed projects are estimated time based on what we think the projects would take, but everything else is real time from our time cards. And, and then like, I guess the last thing I'll just point out is at the bottom, there's a total with projects, total FTEs with projects, and then the budgeted FTEs, how many staff is actually in the budget. So it gives you a general idea of how much the day-to-day, kind of the day-to-day operations plus the proposed projects might take versus how much is budgeted. And so I would look at this as a, I would look at this in a, in a, in a rough sense. It's not exact, it's not an exact science, of course, but it gives you a rough idea. So at least we're in the right ballpark in terms of order of magnitude on available time for things. Okay, so for the city manager department, proposed projects, dogs in parks, that's something that needs to be addressed. So technically, dogs are not allowed in parks. I don't know if you know that. You wouldn't know that if you go out to any park.
Well, don't we have a pilot in one of them that's been a pilot for a while?
Yeah, so in 2008, the city started a pilot project at Putnam Park.
Yeah.
And also at Draper Park. And that, that it, basically, I think that really hasn't, hasn't, it hasn't worked. But the problem is, is that the, the facilities aren't really there. So I think it's a policy change in addition to providing facilities so people can't actually do the right thing and not make it so difficult to do the right thing that they kind of have to break the law to walk their dog at a park. So we'll be, we're proposing to talk about that later this year and get all that hopefully straightened out. The Verona Flady Ranch barn design, that's, we've had an initial public meeting, but we're going to have another public meeting workshop to talk about that and just kind of programming what kind of uses we want to have in the barn, the community wants to have in the barn, to move that forward into an actual design process. Putnam design is under, well, it's going to, I think it'll start getting underway this year, but it'll move into, it'll be in, going into next year as well, the design process, as well as Sunflower Park. We weren't planning on Sunflower Park, but given the likely grant that we're expecting, I expect that's going to be part of it as well. Economic development, this is sort of a catch-all, working on general things to help businesses, bring businesses in that are compatible with our community. And, and it's not entirely, we don't entirely know what might come up, but there's, there's grants that, for example, that we're applying for that could, if we get them, would lead to this kind of work. Again, this is largely, we're talking about resources right now in terms of staff resources, not necessarily budget in this meeting tonight. When we get, and I should, I should have mentioned that earlier, when we get back with the general fund and enterprise study sessions, that's when we're trying to marry up dollars to some of the projects that we have listed. But also the countywide broadband and procurement coordination. So I see this conversation continuing into next year, working with the county on their broadband initiatives as well as coordinated procurement. Coordinating with the tribe, that's something that we're already starting to do, but is probably going to continue into next year, finding ways to better coordinate with them on a variety of different things that we do, both on the project side, but also, you know, just community things that come up that we want to just have easy engagement with them on. The city seal or, or, you know, the interpretive panel, whatever, you know, those kind of things, they come up, they seem to come up from time to time. So we just want to have a better way to coordinate with them. Continued program implementation of the equity ad hoc recommendations and, you know, maybe future things that come up. The personnel rules are now five years old, so they just need to be updated, refreshed. The personnel, labor rules are constantly changing, you know, statutes and labor requirements. So the last time we did it was a major kind of overhaul. This, I don't expect to be a major overhaul, should be a much minor, much more streamlined kind of process, but it does need to be, is refreshed. We do have negotiations coming up for the Police Officers Association and the Police Management Association. So that's going to be probably starting in the second half of this year and then in full swing, the first half of calendar 2024.
When do they expire?
June 30, 24.
24, okay.
Yeah. And then emergency communications, we're, we're, we're exploring other options too in terms of NICSOL. So we're, you know, we're trying to continue to refine that process to better get out, targeting, noticing for a variety of different types of events. So we're always looking for new opportunities there. All right, let's go back to that. So that's, that's it for that. Yeah.
I just had a few questions on there. On the emergency operations plan and communication, would that encompass some of the points that Councilwoman Linus brought up about the Spanish language access and also evacuation routes?
Definitely the Spanish language access. The evacuation routes, I'm not sure. They can be kind of, as the chief said, they can be conditional.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, but the goal is that, I think the goal of the noted, of the communications platform is that we have the ability. So NICSOL is a subscription-based, you have to sign up for it. So unless you've signed up for it, you don't necessarily get it. And so we're looking at options where we can blend the two, where we can not only put out the one, the notices to targeted areas, like let's say Zone 2, right? Zone 2, you need to evacuate and you need to evacuate this way. In English and Spanish and a lot of these platforms we're exploring have, you know, a variety of other languages as well. And it's auto translate, so it may not be perfect, but it's probably pretty good through, through both, you know, text, email, voice, like phone calls, or however people decide they want to receive it. There's, you know, we're also looking to start conversations with the county on, on the, not only the types of communications that you, that, that you push out to people that have subscribed to it, but also the kind that you don't have to subscribe to, it just gets pushed out to you. So we want to blend the two and sort of refine that process. That's, that's what we're looking at.
Can I, can I ask a question? So I know that the city Santa Rosa recently changed from one system to another and a county, I think, maybe uses a different system or, so are we also kind of working with some of the other cities that have these emergency programs? That's one question. And the other one, I wasn't sure where it fits, but there's a weekly operational area meeting that happens on Mondays at 10:00. Do we have a representative that attends those meetings?
There's a, yeah, so on your, on your first question, yeah, so Santa Rosa switched to a platform called Civic Ready and that's, yeah, we are exploring that, that's one of the options. And so we do coordinate and the, the county operates the, is it WIA alerts? I think it's the. Yeah, they have SOCO alerts, which is a different platform, but, but they, right now, they, there's a, like, basically you have to get a FEMA designation to be able to send out, push alerts to like cell phones, that kind of thing, where people don't subscribe to it. So you have to, you can't just do it, you have to be approved by FEMA.
Recording stopped.
Was I that boring? Yeah. Yeah. But anyway, to do that. So we're talking to the county about, we're just starting the conversations about, can we coordinate effectively with the county so they can do that for us? Or do we have to do it ourselves, or how's that going to work best? And then on your other question about...
Weekly op area meeting, Mondays at 10:00.
Yeah, so Katie does the weekly op areas. Sorry, we have a staff member that does it, or lead for emergency services does that.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and we're also re-engaging on the PIO side too.
Recording in progress.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, so there's a couple of meetings on Mondays. One is the op area, which we have a rep in. And then, and we're, there's like a, there's a drill, for example, coming up this fall. It's Golden Eagle, I think it's called. Anyway, we're participating in that to drill our systems and, you know, drill our staff on emergency planning. So we're working together with other agencies in the county. I think we're the only, the only small agency in that group, actually, doing that. Everyone else is like Santa Rosa, Petaluma, the county, and then it's Cattati. But we're, you know, so we're doing those kind of things. And like I said, there's also a PIO one too, that we're just starting to re-engage in. Yeah.
A couple more questions on this slide. Well, one is just more of a comment on the countywide broadband and procurement coordination. And I spoke with city manager a bit about this one-on-one today. But, you know, when I had originally brought this forward, it was the idea that we would get some kind of study or information about what the status of our broadband and cellphone reception is throughout the Cattati. And we discussed today that hopefully he could bring a report on what the county has learned so far, and with maps and what information we can find. So I just want to make sure that stays on the list that hopefully by working together with the county, we can get what we're looking for. But if not, then we still want us to make some progress on it.
Yeah, because ours kind of sucks.
So is the county's work exclusively about broadband access? Or does it also include the cell coverage issue?
Yeah, well, that was one of my first questions, is what does broadband mean to you, county, you know? And they said it encompasses everything that they're doing. They're looking at everything across the board. So they had hired a consultant to assist them, and they developed some initial maps of broadband access areas. And so that's, when I spoke to Vice Mayor Sparks, that's what I was, that's what we were talking about, is trying to get those maps and bringing them forward and just having a conversation about where the county is now. Because admittedly, it's been, it's been a couple of months since the county's given me an update on where they are with that. Yeah.
One more. Last one, just to make sure I'm understanding the FTE on here. What, 1.0 FTE, would that be a full-time person for one year?
Yes.
Okay, so the personnel rule update, I just kind of noticed this. You said it hopefully wouldn't be an entire overhaul, but at 0.2 FTE, wouldn't that be like two months of full-time work by a person? Seems like a pretty big overhaul.
Yeah, so the actual text changes won't be much, but it's a lot of, you have to go around all the labor groups and then go to the council. So it just, it takes a lot of time to talk through it all.
Well, and does that include analyzing what the law changes are to incorporate them into the rules? So that is not an easy task in and of itself.
Yeah, we do have a consultant that would help us, like, you know, an attorney that's an expert in labor law. Will, you know, will point these things out and help us, kind of guide us through that. But then we have to understand it, because a lot of things, you know, on the surface maybe make no sense. And so we have to understand them at a deeper level so that we can then go and explain them to everyone. Because ultimately, all the labor groups need to approve it, you know? So it's just, just like labor negotiations, it can just take a lot of time because it's a lot of one-on-one discussions.
Thank you. And Mayor, do you, when is the right time for us to bring additional new projects that we'd like to talk about?
Would you like that?
Well, I mean, I guess my, you can do it anytime. Or if you're familiar with all the other proposed projects in the departments and you know we're not going to be talking about it, you can bring it up at any, you can bring it up at the end. Or if you already know what's in the packet, you can bring it up at any time, if it's not on.
Well, I can't swear to make a mistake.
Go ahead.
Okay, there were two things I wanted to bring up that might fall under the city manager. I'm not sure where it would fall, so you could tell me. But when the Smart e-bike project died, it was very disappointing. So I'd like us to consider or investigate what it would take to launch a e-bike program, rental program. I know Healdsburg was able to do it on their own. I don't know if that would fall under city manager office.
I would probably take the lead on at least exploring it, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So that was one that I had. And then also, I don't know if this would fall under police or city manager, but I'd like us to investigate different models of civilian oversight. I assume that maybe that would be something that we both...
Yeah, it would be a joint project. Yeah, it would be a joint project. And, yeah, okay, so, I mean, we can, sorry. If you had specific objectives under that too, like what did you have in mind with that?
So there are many different forms that civilian oversight can take. It can be more focused on proactive engagement in looking at policy and objectives. It can be more focused on dealing with complaints and sort of oversight on the backend. There are a lot of models of oversight probably wouldn't work in Cattati because they're too expensive, they require a lot of staff, and it's not really something we could do here. But there are aspects that could work here and could allow the public to have some engagement. And the basic idea being that people who are being policed should have some say in how they're policed and the priorities that our community has. And so I think a good starting point objective would be to just investigate the different models of oversight that are out there and present some options of how expensive they would be, how feasible they are, and what would be a good fit for Cattati. And then bring that for a council discussion. Does that answer your question? Give you a little more direction?
Yeah, I think so. All right.
Did you have something, Ben?
I don't have anything else to add. I'm assuming, so I guess the question is, when or how do we talk? Is it at the budgeting meetings when we talk about where these go on the list? Is, you know, when we add new projects and put them in order and see what makes it above the line?
Well, and I think until we see dollars, we really, you know, we really can't assess that. So for instance, as was just pointed out, I mean, if we're talking a full-on committee that's $100,000 a year to have meetings and agendas and minutes and, you know, a consultant that has to do reports, that could be, you know, $100,000. And does that, from a priorities perspective, make sense to push some of these other things? So we need kind of the dollars to know that, right?
That would be a future year. What Councilmember Sparks is proposing is some staff time devoted to researching models that are out there. That's all. So that would be something that we could discuss in this year's budgeting meeting once the staff gives us an estimate of how much time that would take. So I'm assuming that happens. I'm just not remembering the process completely. I think it's at the next meeting when they're sort of prioritized and we move them up and down the list and see what falls above the line.
Well, because they'll end up down on this proposed project part. And so much like, if you look at, which department? So if you look at, I guess it's the city manager's office right now, they have 5.99 and they have budgeted FTE of 6.50, so...
Right, no, I understand. But this is not the meeting when we're, these are in priority order.
No.
That's the next meeting.
Right.
Yeah, I think, you know, when we, once we figure out, because you're right, what we're talking about right now is just the process of exploring it and bringing back a staff report, basically, right? That's a different, it's a different level of magnitude than actually implementing something. So, yeah, so we, you know, we'll take that input and, you know, work it in and then, you know, try to work it into this. And if we think it's going to be bumping other stuff out, we'll come back at the general, the general fund study session and just kind of report back on where we think things are going to land. And the council has the opportunity at that time to reprioritize things if we need to.
Well, it would end up if we look at the bottom, like, let's just for argument's sake, say that all of a sudden, the city manager's office with all these things we've added is 8.0. We know we have a problem because there's only 6.50 people. So we would then have to prioritize the things there and say, okay, we've only got six and a half people, what order do we want in order to get them done or not? And something will fall. If there's plenty of staff time, then of course, then they get done.
Right.
I was, can I, I was going to just, what I was going to say is too, is maybe a research of existing models. Because I think the city of Santa Rosa, even the kind of, I have recommendations or existing models that we can kind of look at. Because I'm not sure if that would, I don't know, an ad hoc or something. But I think that, starting with city staff, to do a research of what's out there for us to review and think about, you know, next steps. Related to that, you kind of, I just remembered something else that, there's been a question about the RIPA data that was out there. And I'm not sure, I was trying to look through the list of items, stop and arrest data. Is that something that we collect or is that not available yet or?
Yeah, we collected, yeah. So we're planning to bring, we do an annual report. The police department does an annual report. And we're bringing, we're going to be bringing the annual report plus the sort of a summary of the RIPA data.
Okay.
And we're hoping to get to the end of March is the goal at that meeting, to have that data, have a conversation about it.
Could I, on Councilmember Sparks's first suggestion about researching e-bike program, I'd like to request that be a little broader than e-bikes. Most cities have settled on scooters rather than bikes for those. So I don't want to narrow it to e-bikes.
And I'm too new on it, do we know if SCTA is looking to do anything with that? Do you happen to know, Damian?
I don't know. I thought they were going to regroup, but I haven't heard anything new.
I have not, okay.
Oh, yeah, I mean, they're kind of moving at a slow pace.
Okay. Well, I guess I can also ask at our next SCTA meeting, you know, because it would seem appropriately placed if they're doing something.
Right. Yeah, I will. I will say that there seems to be a lot of interest regionally, though, in that, just in meetings with SSU and, you know, Rona Park and us. Everyone's like, we really should do something. But if there is a regional program going on, so it'd be good to know if that's happening. Because I don't know what the status is.
Yeah. Well, I can ask, because I don't remember seeing anything. But that doesn't mean anything because they have lots of stuff.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, no, I haven't, it'd be good to let me know.
Okay, I'll ask.
All right.
And I'll include scooters and other things. Do you want skateboards too? Oh, okay, well, thank God.
Electric pogo sticks. All right. Okay, so if we're done with that, we'll move to admin services. All right, so this is, this is something that, again, we've been talking about internally for a while, is transitioning to monthly utility billing for a couple of reasons. The most obvious, I guess, would be that on the revenue side, it's smoother on the city. And on a billing side for the customer, it's easier to manage. There's very few bills that come in every two months for people and they tend to be, so they're not monthly, and then they're also bigger because they're every two months. And I think, you know, looking into, exploring that and bringing a potential process forward would be a good move for us. So that's one of the proposed projects. Fixed asset work order processes, this is a support role for Public Works. So last year, there was the, one of the goals was unified request tracking. And we've kind of done parts of that, but we're, you know, what we're trying to, what we're trying to look for is a really good tool where, for the public, for example. The public could say, hey, there's a street light out right here, take a picture, send it to us, and it gets routed to the right people and it gets repaired. And they get notified, if they want to get notified. But it also could be used internally with departments. So I don't have to, like, bug Public Works constantly. I'm like going around snapping pictures of things and texting it to them all the time. But, you know, in a more streamlined process where it's, you know, where it's just all, it's better managed and better, and it's easy to report out too, which I think would be helpful. But, you know, also part of that is, you know, an updated asset management system so they all be connected. It's only one line on this slide, but it's a lot, it's actually a lot of work, that particular one. Digital records workflow, that's continuing to digitize our stuff, moving. Admin Services has done a lot to move their paper processes into digital processes. So we've, we actually have very few paper processes these days. So Angelo's been really hard at work at that, but just continuing to do that. The backflow program and code review, this was, you know, looking at streamlining the backflow. This is particularly for people that don't, that don't pay for their backflow tests to be done. And then we have to bill them and do the assessment and try to streamline that process. Updating what the admin services, admin services has a lot of public-facing services on it, billing and business licenses, animal licensing, a lot of things like that. So streamlining some of their page layout and more, putting together more social media content. Hydrant meter program update, this is related to that Hydrant ATM that we talked a little bit about last year, but we're in the, the design is done and we're kind of moving into implementation. Payroll system update, we're continuing to, you know, look at that and trying to, we have an electronic payroll system that works okay, but we're looking at options there. TOT taxation process, this is the forever optimist in us that we're going to have TOT and that we need to have a process for collecting and monitoring. So that obviously doesn't matter if there's no hotel, but if there is a hotel, then that does matter.
Hopefully, it'll be here before the hotels here.
Yes. Well, yeah, trust me, it'll be in high gear if the hotel starts getting built. Deposit account process review, so deposit accounts, if you're not familiar with that, that's development accounts. So when a developer comes in, they have to put money on deposit that the city bills against for consultant services or our own time. That's an account, there's just a lot of multi-department coordination going on with that. And so just continually trying to refine that and make it better. Financial policy review and update, again, that's just good practice to update financial policies. It was a council priority for us to look into better ways of managing our, sort of our bank accounts. So, you know, we spend a lot of time, for example, on the unfunded liabilities and doing a lot of work, kind of forward-looking work to try to proactively manage that. And we do, you know, we're doing a lot on sort of the expenditure side in terms of, you know, capital planning and doing a lot of both service and infrastructure planning so that we, you know, get to a much better place with our, you know, expenditures so that we can get through a lot of the rehab and get into the, just the maintenance mode. So there's been a lot kind of done on both ends of that book, the two bookends, you know, then the last piece, and this was council direction last year that we're still working on, is the financial policy for what do we do with the money that we actually have in the bank, so to speak. Right now, it goes to the local, you know, mostly goes to LEAF, which is the state-managed local agency investment fund. But it's relatively low yield. It's, you know, it's a little risk, but it's low yield. And there's other, there's other potential opportunities there that are also very safe, but higher yield. that are also very safe, but higher yield. And so that's what this is about. And we actually, I think at our next council meeting, we'll be talking a little bit about that, about some possible options there. And then finally, business license audit sounds so awful, but it's not really an audit. It's just, just basically making sure that, you know, businesses are, are current with their business licensing. And, and just always trying to look to improve the process and making it easier for our businesses and less confusing just to renew and update licensing. I think that was it for admin services, so just stop there.
So there are 11 on the screen and 10 in the chart, the, the digital records workflow doesn't get any time allotted in the chart, so maybe it doesn't take any time, but I kind of doubt it.
It's, yeah, I, so that, yeah, right. So that's on there and not in the, not in there. It's just because it's, I thought it was worth calling out, even though it's, it's like, I think for Angela, it's kind of like a day-to, almost a day-to-day thing, but it, it does take time to come up with new processes to digitize things. And like I said, she's done a lot of it. A lot of the stuff is fully digital now, but whenever you move to something new, digital, it's a whole new workflow, and so it takes some time to shift everything over.
Yeah, just briefly, I mean, it is, is something I think our department, a lot of departments, we're looking at how do we stem things, you know, and put it into a digital to start off with. And so it's really about process updates is kind of where we fit it in. And then implementation and training kind of is how it ends up getting rolled out and scheduled within our thing, because it's not a one-time task, it's every single time you get something and how do you think about it in a digitization process as well as a records retention process. So it's, I guess it's kind of more of a goal, an ongoing goal. And so it does kind of, it's already included in some of our time up and above and not specifically called out as a project, I would guess.
Right, I can see if it's, I mean, it's the new way that we operate, so, so it becomes day-to-day. It's no longer a project. It's now, so that makes sense.
Yeah.
And when we ultimately implement a work order processes, are we going to keep an eye on that? Because that could eat up resources extremely quickly if citizens get overzealous with it and start sending you pictures of everything on every corner. I mean, at, at some point, it seems like we need to monitor that and then possibly set expectations so we don't give citizens a tool and then have them be disappointed, because we have 10,000 of these things and, you know, have the resources to do them.
Yeah, I definitely think setting expectations is very important. But, I mean, how it, how it works is you get these in, you have to triage it like anything else. So some things can get addressed right away because they're more urgent, others might be a week, and some might just be when we have time. So you're right, so the expectation is going to be important, depending on what it is. But setting the expectations when we set the system up is going to be.
So are we looking at a tool that, that has a feedback loop so we can, you know, kind of triage, if you will, and give people a, got it, it's going to take, you know, a week to do, got it, it's going to take a little bit longer, we'll, you know, that kind of a thing?
Yeah, I mean, typically, they give you options to be anonymous if you want to be.
Okay.
Or, or you can leave your email or your phone number or whatever. Typically, I think if you're going to leave something, an email will be a minimum, just so you can get a response, like, we got your message, we'll, you know, we'll let you know what the status is. And, and then usually when you close it out, it'll send another email, like, this is, this has been done, thank you for the, you know, comment.
Okay.
Yeah. But expectations are important, because sometimes someone might send something that maybe they thinks is important, but in our sort of scheme of hierarchy, it's, it's like not really that critical, you know?
Or, and/or it could be something that's going to be taken care of along with another project that's in the pipeline. Yeah, we know that's an issue, but it, it will be incorporated, but it's not going to be incorporated until, you know, next summer or something. It's trying to, again.
As long as they leave contact information, we can provide that kind of feedback.
Okay. If not, it's really almost on them. If they don't leave that contact information, it's hard for us to engage in a, in a real conversation about it.
Yeah. All right, are we ready to move on to the next one? All right, so this is bigger font, just because I think it's multiple slides. So community development is, actually, let me take that back, it's just, there's big projects now that I'm looking at them. All right, so the bike and ped master plan update, we've already been engaging with SCTA on this one, and it's, you know, it will get done. So, you know, we've committed to, you know, engage with them so that we have hopefully a, you know, a bike and ped plan that works seamlessly with the regional one that they're putting together. But we've also committed to doing it ourselves if they take, you know, if they just don't do it and take too long, so.
Can we ask questions now or wait until?
Okay.
That plan, the bike and pedestrian plan, SCTA got funding from Caltrans, but the last I saw, they didn't have a timeline for, for, it was kind of undetermined. Do you know, they were waiting on permit Sonoma? Do you know if they have a timeline now for that?
Yeah.
So they received, I believe, four solid responses to their RFPs, and they are doing interviews this week. And our staff is participating in those interviews. And we, if you read the RFP, Catati's called out as being the first of the jurisdictions to be included in the individual plans. So we've been coordinating with them and even took the, the funds that the council allocated for our plan and said, hey, we can help support your costs by using our funds that the council did, but we need to be a priority. And, and they seem to be listening. And we expect to do an update to the council in the near term. I don't have a date yet, but in the near term, and once we have more specifics on when it's going to kick off. But we do expect it to occur in the spring.
Okay, that's good news. Thank you.
All right, and then Santero Way specific plan update. And.
Can I indulge people and, and open this up since we have?
It's, yeah, it's the, yeah, chair's prerogative.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, council. My favorite point that was just being discussed up there, and I'd just like to point out that with the pedestrian and bicycle plan, I believe there's two parts to it. There's the city of Catati engagement, and then there's also the backend working with the Sonoma County. So I hope we can get the, the public input side at least very visible and going and get that documented and at least have that, you know, even if it's not down on paper, at least visible within, within the sort of the staff. You know, that fits into so many of the other types of things that we're talking about in Catati. If we have a pedestrian and bicycle plan, it can inform so much more of the operations for how we deal with the sort of the VMT, the reduction of VMT, how we can actually deal with more some of the climate goals. Because getting people out, having a, a basic plan that can, people can subscribe to, I think is very valuable. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah.
Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end the public comment.
Thank you.
All right, so Santero Way, so this is, this is something we've been, you know, we put out RFPs and we've been working on what that might look like. We're still internally discussing how that might go. So we're going to be developing some, some options and recommendations and bringing that to council in probably not-too-distant future. This is, again, economic development, you saw it in the city manager department, but planning and manager's office tend to work together closely on some of the stuff. Housing administration establishment, this has been something that, you know, the housing element's taken up a lot of the bandwidth this year, but the housing administration is something that we're continuing to try to get better traction on. Update, our electronic permitting system. So we do have an electronic permitting system, but we're in the process of updating it. And like any of these kind of system upgrades, they're pretty time-intensive. So that's continuing. Monitor and implement U-State housing legislation, that's a, that's a, who knows what, but it's probably going to be a couple hundred of them. So it's, it's a, you know, there's always work to be done there, at least lately. And then this last one, general plan, safety element update. We did our hazard mitigation plan update, and so we need to look into our safety element and make sure that it's still consistent with our hazard mitigation plan that we recently updated.
Can I ask a question? Housing administration establishment, can you define that for me?
Yeah, I'll give you the broad, and Noah can give you the detail, but basically, for affordable housing stock, you need to, you need to monitor it. And we, I think we do a pretty good job of the for-sale stuff. And then a lot of the for-rent stuff, like through Burbank, is pretty well-managed, but there is another sort of a third group outside of those two groups where it's the specific, it's specifically for rent, but not managed by anybody, like not a Burbank housing or anything like that. And so that would typically fall on the city to manage that, and we're still trying to get our arms around how to best do that.
Damian, what happened, or, I mean, maybe we're in good shape, with code enforcement? We haven't really heard much about that lately. Are we, are we not having any, or are we, it just seems quiet?
Yeah, okay.
Well, we're processing or addressing a significant number of code enforcement cases.
They're just doing what we're asking, and that's why we're not hearing much?
Yeah.
That's a good thing.
We have, we have an administrative hearing scheduled in this room tomorrow to try to, try to help motivate someone who's been less than responsive with dealing with code violations, numerous code violations. So generally, we have, I mean, there's, we could do a whole presentation just on code enforcement, frankly, but if you look at the FTE, it is a significant, because that's, that's actually staff time, that does not include the consultant time.
Oh, it doesn't?
No, so, so that's, that's a lot, I mean, it takes a lot of my time, but I will say, we've created a program, we have a, a structure in place for people to file complaints, we follow up, we address violations, we prioritize substandard housing and unpermitted construction as our two primary. But we also go after trash and debris and blight issues. But I will say, it's been fairly successful. We have kind of a variety of, of kind of levels of, of responses, as is typical in code enforcement. But I do feel like we have a good handle on a process and, and we resolve a significant number of cases every year, and we can present statistics on that if the council's interested in hearing more.
I think at some point, that would be good information, if everyone else would be interested in that. I, because we, you know, kind of had this big kind of change and push, it's probably been almost two years ago, right? Oh, what? Oh, we'll see, close. So it'd be nice to see if, if what we thought has come to fruition, so that would be helpful. Did you?
Yeah, I had a proposed project. I know that we're already over the staff budget, but we had discussed this at team building, that we can put things on the list, even if they're not going to make the cut this year. And Noah, maybe you can tell me if this is something we need, but with SB nine and the ability to split lots and do Plex housing, I'm wondering if we need to do a Plex housing objective design standards similar to what we did for multifamily?
Yes, that's a good question. And we do not have those for a single family, and I would almost put Plex housing in that category, just the scale is similar. So that is something that I think is important. We just have a pretty ambitious list. But that being said, I don't mind putting it on the list, and you'll see I intentionally kind of oversubscribed because opportunities come about to kind of put two projects together, especially if you have a consultant contract, those types of things. So having oversubscribed lists, but then a priority of those from the council as well is helpful to me to find opportunities where we can kind of take care of multiple things with one contract or effort.
I'd very much like to get that somewhere written down and, and perhaps maybe even as a suite of Plex housing initiatives, including maybe incentives and things like that.
Excellent. And you'll see, it's not, I would kind of put it in the implementing, monitoring and implementing state housing legislation. The housing element itself is going to have a significant amount of projects for us to undertake with mandated timelines. We're kind of sharpening those timelines right now in hopes to satisfy HCD's goals and requirements for us. So you'll see that, and frankly, you should look at that in concert with this list and help to prioritize maybe individual efforts, put timelines on things. So it's almost like a multi-year priority list as you see the housing element stuff and this combined.
Okay.
All right. Mind advancing? All right, so Public Works. So we are expecting to construct a park and ride, or two park and rides, actually. And this is the replacement spots for the hotel lot that we sold, so we got to build one up at the north end of the HOV and one down in Petaluma. Once that, sort of, once that, sort of, once the onsite construction starts in Catati, we need to start working on these. So design is ready, it's just ready to bid as soon as we get the go on it. We got a grant for the Redwood and Cypress Street rehab, rehab projects. It's almost a million-dollar grant, so we're, that's why I list their SCTA priority project. So we're in design on that, and that's an expedited design process. It actually needs to go to the California Transportation Commission, I think, by June of this year, and then into construction not long after that. So it's an expedited project to meet the funding requirements. The 2024 Street Preservation Project, so that's going to be sort of our, our slurry seal kind of project for the year, as I mentioned. So the reason why this is on here again is also in the manager's department, is because how these park projects work is they start in my department, really REC, for the initial concept outreach, initial design work. And then it goes into Public Works to kind of get the thing, you know, get the thing across the finish line and get it into construction. The Highway 116 and West Catati Avenue intersection design, so that's underway right now. It's also an SCTA funding priority, but we're also continuing to look for other funding sources, too. But that's, anyway, that's significant effort that's going to continue into next year. Gateway signage, this is a potential project that we have some preliminary design for, to do a basically gateway sign. So we already have the sign standards that were part of the wayfinding and sign program, but incorporating that at an entry point in Catati. And then the Veranda Fletti Ranch, I think that's what it is, the barn design. So presuming that we, you know, we have the workshop and then we have some direction on what kind of amenities or what kind of uses to program in that space, we would move forward into the design work, moving from the, from recreation manager's office into Public Works.
When do we anticipate the regular city entrance signs being done, since some of the ones that we have are almost nonexistent?
Well.
Do we have to wait for the rest of the city seal stuff to be done, or what?
If, I mean, if we want to incorporate it, which I think that the.
The current ones have it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And, I mean, we had just, there's several, as you know, there's several gateways that we can choose. I mean, major gateways, being like, you know, commerce, Old Redwood Highway 116, East Catati. This was, this one was, just, there's some preliminary design work done because there had previously been some preliminary design work done there. And so we leveraged that. And there's also some space there, it's not just a sign, there's also like some space to do some stuff with the pathways and the crossing of commerce there. So that's, that's just why this one had been worked on. But if the council has other priorities, they can obviously direct us.
Because it would seem that really, you know, since we've kind of nailed down some of the sign stuff, that some of those signs really do need to be replaced badly.
Yeah, well, there's, there's the signs on the posts.
Right.
Is that what you're talking about?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they're faded and kind of like.
They're almost nonexistent.
Right.
They're embarrassing.
They, yeah, they're bad.
Yeah, yeah. So that, I mean, that's an easy, that's a no-brainer. And we can incorporate that.
Okay.
Because putting a sign on the post, I mean, once we have the seal.
Yeah, the posts are our. Yeah, the posts are already there, but the signs that are sitting there are really bad.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, we had sort of informally talked about that internally, like, let's just do the posts, because those are easy, you can do that with very minimal money. It's, this one is like a monument sign, right?
Okay, yeah, no, I'm not talking about those.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the ones on the metal posts that are here, there, and everywhere.
Right, okay.
I couldn't tell you where they all are. Craig probably could, but...
Oh, they're everywhere, they're all kind of scattered.
And once we repave Cypress, we'll want people to know that the street on this side of the sign is ours, not that side.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
In case you didn't, couldn't tell by the road.
Right now, we put the sign down by West Sierra, but, you know, or once we pave it, and then, yeah, we'll move it up the street as we pave. All right, and actually, talking about signage, one thing that didn't make the list, although it is something that we need to work into this somehow, because it was, it came out of the ad hoc, was the electronic marquee, you know, exploring that. So that was an oversight, but it needs to be worked in, and I'm not sure what would, might bump out, but I think once we put costs to it, it'll be more obvious, you know, where things are going to land.
Okay.
So just know that that's in there as well. And then, so Civic Center Parking Lot Improvements, this is mostly about some more efficient parking layouts, also adding EV chargers in the parking lot, starting the plan for that transition. The wastewater system emergency generator, this is a grant project, so this is contingent on getting a grant from FEMA. We have a grant, we expect to be approved by FEMA, but FEMA's taking their sweet time about it, so we'll see, but this is backup generators for our sewer lift stations, only to be used during emergencies. And then the annual, this is the annual landscape and bike and pet safety project, so this is something, the landscape one is something we started doing just this last year, but there's some street, this is primarily street-related landscapes that are in pretty rough shape, and so putting some money aside to get them back up, and then, and then, just, we're also working on another plan to just do, to try to get better at replacing things on an ongoing basis, so that we're not doing full landscape rehabs all the time. So once we get through the landscape rehabs, as plants die, we'll replace them instead of, you know, just pulling it out and moving on, you know. The hydrant ATM, that's, I talked about that earlier, but that's getting rid of those rental backflow devices that we give to contractors that are problematic for us. And the Cypress Averon Avenue Sewer Repair or Replacement Project, that, again, this is a utility project in advance of the road project that's going to come through there. And when we did videoing of that particular segment of sewer, there's places that have some defects that need to be repaired, so that's what this is about. Sidewalk Gap Closure Project, that isn't construction, that's, that I think is the next in line in terms of funding from SETA's priority, so we'd be working on that, on design work on that, to fully vet that out. But this is, but I mean, you can think of, you know, like, all the little areas of sidewalk gaps around town that we're trying to target to fill them in. And actually, some of them, we're actually dealing with even early, so like when we do, the project that's about to start out on Myrtle to reconstruct the road is also doing the pathway in front of Putnam, which I think technically was part of this project, but we're advancing it, but we're, anyway, we're, there's plenty of gaps to work on. The SCADA System Upgrade, this is a pretty time-consuming, it's probably going to be a pretty time-consuming project, but it's, our SCADA system now is old enough that it needs to be, get replaced and upgraded, so, and also continually hardened and updated to the latest security standards. And then asset management and tracking, that's also a very time-consuming project to get all that in place. And I think that, yeah, that's, so, that's it for Public Works.
Do you have a question?
Just one quick question about the landscape, ongoing landscape projects. Can we plant more milkweed as we do that?
Mm-hmm.
I actually saw two monarch, I texted Damian a picture last year, I saw two monarch butterflies in my neighborhood for the first time ever in Catati last year, so I know we have them here, but if we had milkweed, they'd have a place to lay their eggs and survive.
Okay, great. Yeah.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, I, well, I have one other project I'd like to propose for the Public Works list, which is incorporating bike facilities into the pavement management plan. Our bike paths are in rough shape, and I don't know, it just seems to me to make sense to incorporate them into the overall pavement management plan, and that obviously would take some work, so I'd propose that as a project this year.
Great. Yeah, we're actually, well, we're working on the CIP right now, the draft CIP, to bring the planning commission and council, so it's good timing.
Okay, I'm gonna, Sylvia, did you have any question? Okay, I'm going to open this on backup.
Yes, thank you. I wonder with the whole process of the sidewalk and the public improvements for bicyclists, is that, is that, should that come up before the planning commission? Should that be reviewed, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, which it is? So what's the process for reviewing some of the items, particularly the bigger plans that are in there? Because we, you know, we came up with some suggestions on West Sierra right at the end, when it was essentially, you know, the go-no-go for the plan, and of course, there's a lot of planning that goes into it, so even though it might have been just a sign at that point, it was like, well, we can't touch that. So I'm just wondering, is there a process, is there somewhere early in the process that it can be viewed, the plans can be viewed, coming up particularly also Highway 106 in Gravenstein, or West Sierra that's there? So just, is there a place for this to be reviewed in some capacity? Thank you.
Let you answer that, City Manager.
Yeah, so I will, so generally, I'll say that a lot of the small projects are more like safety-related projects, that probably doesn't fall into that bucket, but for like the sidewalk gap closures or the 116 West Catati, yeah, we absolutely are going to, we can bring those forward. In terms of the right venue, I think we're, you know, we definitely would be bringing it to, to council, and I mean, to planning commission, too, in terms, in terms of the CIP, but that's, I think he's asking for more developed, like, improvement plans or concept plans. I don't know if you had anything to add on that, but I, but normally, it's the con...
We've gotten much improved on that process. I mean, with our ClearGov website, all the projects are out there with the plans attached to them, and I've got a, we've got a daily diary on the active projects under construction, so they're certainly going to be available there. And as far as the sidewalk project, we could have a workshop or, you know, something additional. I know we get scored highly on the purely selfish reasons, but the grant score is really high if we involve the public, I mean, for good reasons, and so a lot of that emphasis has been in forcing us to do that, make them a more public process, and it certainly makes a lot of sense.
So maybe having them in an open workshop before their final final, so that we don't introduce things late? Yeah.
When I was on Planning Commission, I was, I was surprised that, that public projects, city projects, don't go through a design review process that involves the Planning Commission, and I think Commissioner Hancock, Commissioner Hancock for a couple more weeks, brings up an important point, that the Planning Commission serves as the city's bike ped advisory committee, and yet, when the city is planning street improvements that involve typically serving bikes and pedestrians, it's typically not, the project typically doesn't come before that commission, and I would, it seems to me like it should, for those specific aspects, the bike ped aspects, not in their role as planning commission, but in their role as bike ped advisory committee. Seems to me to make sense for those projects to actually get looked at by the bike ped committee. So for instance, the upcoming West Catati 116 intersection, I think should, should be seen by the bike ped committee.
So could they get noticed as the planning commission acting as the...
Yeah, I think it'd still be the planning commission, right, but it would be serving in that role.
Serving in that role, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, like, a project like that was, I was, I guess what I was trying to make the distinction of is like a small safety project versus, like, if you do an expansion of a system, that definitely should have public review and that makes sense.
But West Sierra is an example. I don't think the West Sierra project went before Planning Commission for bike ped review. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with the design, it just seems to me like that's a project that the Planning Commission ought to have seen in their role as the bike ped committee.
Yeah, the pavement and the related bike and pet facilities.
Right, right, that's all.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Is that clear?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, so do we have any Zoom attendees that would like to make public comment on this point?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey speaking to our Zoom attendees. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay, we'll bring that back, and we would like to take a five-minute break, if that would be okay with y'all?
Yes.
Okay, we'll be back in five. All right, then I will call this meeting back to order, and we will continue on.
All right. You advance the slide there, Kevin? I think my, my wife would like a beep around me sometimes, so she can keep track of me. Okay, so we are now on the Police Department. So we, we have, the first one is... All right. Okay, so we are now on the police department. So we we have, the first one is for electric vehicles. We are working on a system to integrate the dash cams basically into the into the, the issue has been that the EVs all have glass roofs. So you can't mount them like a conventional steel roofed kind of camera system. So we're working at a, we're looking at a system that is independent of a steel roof and can mount in a dash camera. So it serves a couple of purposes. It also points back and points at the compartment, you know, so if anyone's in the car with them, there's video of that. There's video of what's going on outside because if, you know, one of the things we've noticed with body cams and, you know, they all automatically go on is that at least at the initial part of the of the incident, you just see like typically the steering wheel or the, you know, maybe a little bit of the windshield because the, you know, the body cam is chest level. So it's a both a documentation, but also just a risk mitigation tool. So you can see exactly what's going on on the street before even the officer exits the vehicle. And that just gives us some more perspective on the full scene. So then it fully integrates with the body cam system, what we're looking at. So that's that. And then so the canine replacement, we're looking at retiring Remo, our current police canine, and moving to a scent tracking dog. So the the current dog is a Belgian Malinois. It's a, you know, control dog basically, and also does narcotics. It's trained for narcotics. More recently, we haven't really been using it for narcotics because of the prevalence of fentanyl. It could harm or kill the dog if it hits fentanyl in a drug search. So we've pulled back on that. But also a scent dog, you know, the chief is, the chief and the chief brought it up. I thought, I think it's a great idea is to transition to scent dog, scent type dogs. We're talking like a bloodhound or something, you know? So the dog wouldn't be used for control or apprehension or anything like that. It's really just tracking down missing people typically. So, you know, we have people with dementia or other things and there's different ways that, you know, family members can, it's actually pretty cool. It's pretty cool what they have these days where you can even get like pieces of, I mean, you can do it the old fashioned way where you give them a piece of clothing and let the dog smell it and the dog will, you know, take off and find them. But there's also kits that, you know, especially for people that have elderly family members where maybe they have Alzheimer's or dementia, they can.
Autism.
Or autism, yeah. They can, they can actually get like a skin swipe basically, and they put it in a refrigerated container and keep it on hand. And so if they ever go missing, they can call us up and we can get the scent dog to go find them. So that's, so that's what that's about, in case you're wondering what a scent dog is. High-low evacuation drill. So that's a joint event with SSU and Runner Park. Again, getting to the like the evacuation routes, this is a, because we're so, obviously so close to Runner Park and SSU, it's a, it's a joint effort. Whenever there's an evacuation, it's going to impact all of us. So we continue to drill and, you know, try to make sure that if we ever have to do an evacuation drill, and that's the, this is the method, sort of on the street method in addition to the electronic methods we talked about earlier, to let people know, you know, if, you know, if they're like, you know, my grandparents and don't own anything electronic, like a phone or anything, and, you know, that the backup is a car going down the street, letting you know that it's time to go. So coordinating, you know, this is the way that we can, we continue to coordinate with our partners nearby to make sure that we're coordinated in our evacuation exercises and directing people all in the same, well, directing people in the appropriate direction so not everyone's running into each other during an evacuation. So we did a, we've had a sort of a pilot program going with the Bola Wrap. This is the, this is the device that, it's basically like a weighted line that will wrap around you, just a way to control someone that's maybe out of control. But you don't want to use taser or anything else, you know, maybe more lethal on them to control the situation. And we're looking at expanding the pilot program into full deployment for our officers just to have this tool available as another, as another way to apprehend someone that's out of control or control the situation without hopefully hurting them or the officers or the, any of the public around them. We're going to be continuing the EV deployment for the police department. So we'll just have another car or two. We'll have to see what the budget allows. Continuing to do the pedestrian vehicle beaten focused enforcement. So that's something that we, that we started last year. Having focused enforcements in the beats and also focused enforcement on certain topic areas like pedestrian crossings, talk, you know, distracted driving, that kind of targeted enforcement. So continuing to do that. And then continued training for de-escalation, implicit bias and recognizing people in mental health crisis. So I think you, you all know that at a fundamental level, all public safety officers have to train the post. And post is not static either. Post is always adding more training requirements to stay current with your training standards. This, what we're talking about here is stuff above and above and beyond what post requires. So continuing to go above and beyond what what the statewide standard is. And the statewide standard in California is significantly higher than most states in the country. So it's a higher standard than the higher standard for training. And I think that is it for the police.
I think there's one more page.
Oh, I'm sorry. There finally is a second slide and I don't, sorry about this. So, all right. Let me start. I'll do the last bullet last. So SSU internships and equity focus and recruiting. So this is something that we've been working with SSU on. They're trying to expand their internship programs and we're working with them on that. And the equity focus is really trying to encourage people to apply, to apply for a career in law enforcement that that maybe don't know that that career option is available to them. So we've been, you know, looking at ways to try to just make more people aware that that's a viable job opportunity that they can move into. So PSAP is just, that means Public Safety Answering Point, like a 911 call center is basically what that means. And so there's, this is a time commitment for our police staff, but it's, it's funded through, it's funded through this, through a state program which collects fees on like phone, it's like, you know, on your telephone bills. Anyway, they, they fund 911 dispatch center upgrades to keep them always current. We did one, it seems like yesterday, but maybe it's.
Six years ago?
Six years ago. Anyway, we had a major upgrade, so it's, it's time to do it again. You know, things get old and we need to upgrade the telecommunications equipment and make sure it's current. And there's also continually evolving new methods, like a recent thing was that in the last couple of years was texting to 911. And I think there's something else that they're maybe deploying soon. Anyway, there's always, yeah, they're already always trying to come up with new ways through state, you know, the state legislature is mandating new ways for people to get in contact with with dispatch. The text to 911 is kind of interesting. It, my understanding is it came out of sort of, like, it came out of domestic violence sort of experience where, you know, someone's in a domestic violence situation and they, you know, it's maybe not a great time to pick a phone up and say, hey, police, come rescue me from my, you know, battering spouse. And so they, anyway, it made it to the state legislature and they passed a law saying, you know, you should also allow texting to 911 so you can do it in a quiet way, you know, and get the police there to help you. So it was interesting to sort of the evolution of why that came to be because I was curious. Anyway, it's just, so it's a continually evolving landscape in terms of how people can contact dispatch. So continued community outreach in a variety of different ways, through the beats, actually being out in the beat areas with the community. The TPA is Thomas Page Academy. So continually engaging with the staff there. NNO is National Night Out. That's the big event that we have at the park every year. Coffee with a cop. I think you all know what that is, but if you want to have coffee with one of our cops, it's your opportunity to do that. So we do that around town at different places, different coffee shops. All right. And then the last one, so the new FTE. So one of the things we're looking at building into this draft budget that you'll be seeing is a new full-time position in the police department. And what we've been experiencing in the last, this isn't just in the last year, but it's, it was, it started a couple, I don't know, two, three years ago and we thought maybe it was a blip, but it's seems to be an ongoing trend is that we're getting hit with a lot of public records requests, like a lot all the time. And it's overwhelming some of our dispatchers to be able to do that. So historically, we've been able to manage it through like slow shifts and things like that. But there's a much higher volume of public records requests. And on top of that is the, sort of the new expectation for data analysis coming out of the police record systems. So the police record systems historically have been set up to report to, you know, state DOJ or federal, you know, so they're, the reports are kind of pre, they're sort of pre-built by data specialists and they, you know, and they're really good at just like pushing out that, that report because that's what's required. But then inevitably, you know, as there's more and more interest around policing, people don't want just that report. They want this report, but some of that and some of this and some of this. And it's just like, well, there's no report for that. And we don't have anyone on staff that can do that. It's all in the system. And this is, you know, this is part of the reason why, even when we do like the police annual reports, this is like a major time commitment is sort of assembling all this information because it's just not easily available. Even though it's all there in the computer, we just don't have the expertise to develop reports and create them. So it's a, it's a major time commitment to get that information out of the system. Yeah. Yep. Yeah, a lot of attorney discovery and then with, you know, you know, these days, and it's a good thing, but literally everything we do is on video. And on one side, it's been great because it helps in case prosecution. It helps in complaints. Almost all of our complaints go away when they realize we have video of what happened. So that's good, you know? And then, but you know, all that video adds, it's just a lot of information that needs to be packaged up and sent up to the county for, you know, if it's a DA case or whatever. And it just takes a lot of time to put all it together. And historically, dispatchers did that, but we're, we're finding that the dispatchers are kind of at their maximum capacity to do all that. And it's not, it's not getting easier. And I, and I, you know, we still don't have a great way to get information out of the record systems. So. I think that was the last one.
Did you have a question?
You had a question.
Yeah.
On the list of projects, proposed projects, police officer recruiting with focus on equity and inclusion. I haven't seen an announcement, like a recruitment announcement for a police officer, but how do you, how do you seek out equity inclusion in your recruitments? And can you put, you know, for bilingual desired or, you know, how do you recruit more women officers, you know? What's your strategy for that?
So like anything in human resources, there's a lot of law around it. So we had to approach it pretty carefully. The ad hoc looked at that last year and came to, so the direction of the ad hoc was, there is some, if there's a, if there's a need, then there's a way to do it, right? So if, for example, there's, and this was about Spanish speaking, I think, and this is an example. If we have certain job classes where Spanish is regularly needed, and there's a couple, there's a handful around the city where that's like a regularly, a potentially regularly needed skill, then that's something that potentially could be added to a job class description as a desirable qual, you know, trait. So, so that would be in the job posting, right, that we desire Spanish speaking person for this job. In terms of looking for recruits, so we're trying to go down, so we've just started it, but we're trying to go down the chain. I mean, we're looking at like SSU, the chief is very involved in the students at, they're still at SSU trying to encourage people to, you know, get into a career in law enforcement.
I would just, I would like to add that I have a need for Spanish speakers. There is a need significant. And so I will be looking at that. And so I would, I mean, it would be great to have, you know, Spanish speaking female officer, right? We have one, Sergeant Gao, but I would love more of that. And I will be looking at that. We have two full-time police officer positions right now. And again, I'd love to have Spanish speakers. And actually me and Damian and Katie Duran are going to meet here pretty soon and have this discussion.
Yeah, we, so, so right now, kind of where things stand is, is really engaging with SSU to try to, to try to encourage people. Also, the standard, through the standards of JC, there's the, but these people have already signed up for the training program for the police officer. You know, they're cadets, you know, we, the academy, yeah, we have people there that help us find good independent candidates. That's where things stand at the moment, but I mean, obviously you can take that all the way down the line and try to, you know, try to encourage people. I'm not sure what form that would take yet, but, you know, even like in high schools or something, if you could.
Or even organizations like Latino Peace Officer Association. I think they have a local chapter, you know, so I think through their networks, I think just outreach and trying to just hit those right areas.
What, I mean, what we've seen is that right now policing is, it's very, is a very impacted job field because people don't, just the environment, people don't want to be police officers right now, to be honest. And so it's, it's a challenging recruitment environment. The academies are struggling to fill their classes and get people graduated to fill the, you know, a lot of people are retiring on the other end. So, so, you know, what we've been talking about more is like, how can we get people that aren't maybe already in the loop, like interested? So can we go to high schools, like, you know, people that are coming out and then could go to the academy potentially? Because once they're in the academy, presumably they've already made the decision they want to do it, which is good that we're there and we're engaging with, you know, potential recruits. But, you know, and that's what we're, so we started doing with SSU to try to get them, you know, to, because they have other options, you know? A criminal justice major might have other options, but like, hey, why don't you come work for us? So we started doing that. But I think, you know, I think it can go down even to high schools. And we have had some engagement in high schools, but not with that focus. And I think it, you know, could take some, you know, some dedicated effort to start coming up with ways to get new people into the system. Because that's really what it's going to take, is getting new people into the system, not recycling the same people that everyone is already all fighting over, you know?
Ben?
Thanks. I'm, I'm happy to hear about this potential new hire. That feels like a really valuable position. I was going to propose a project which undoubtedly would be assigned to this person if, if this person gets hired, which is, you know, we currently have only half a year's worth of RIPA data from the last half of 2021. But during the next year that we're talking about now, we'll get the full 2022 data set. And so I think we need somebody to study the implications of our RIPA data and also do some research about what emerging best practices are among law enforcement agencies for responding to RIPA data. Not in responding in a PR sense, but responding in a, how do we change what we do to, if we see some, some trends emerging in RIPA data that aren't what we want to see. So, so some kind of project acknowledging this new RIPA data and how we're going to try to take that in and take it seriously in, in our operations would, would be a proposal of mine that probably would end up with this person.
It's, it's kind of hard looking at that data and it's kind of hard putting a perspective on it. Well, what, what does it mean? How many of, you know, these do we really have? Percentages are great, but out of context, they don't really mean anything. And then when you start looking at the rest of the pieces of data that go along with it, it can tell different stories about what it is that that's in front of you. So I think we do really need someone that can get in there and look at the data. Because it, at a high level, you get one thing, but then that leads to more questions. And then that leads to more questions. So we really need. and then that leads to more questions, so we really need to have the ability to answer those questions, because just looking at general data kind of just leaves you yearning for kind of, well, you know, what's the devil in the details here?
Yeah, that is true, I mean, you might, you might see something that brings a question to your mind, and then you, and then you need to dig into it to understand what's driving that. Is it just noise in the data, is it, you know, is there something actually there? You know, what, what's causing this, you know, so?
I have four questions, trying to go through quickly. One is just related to Councilmember Lemus's question about the bilingual. I know you're going to give us an update real soon about the progress on the ad hoc items, but I just wondered, where do we stand on the reclassification study that we needed to do in order to have that bilingual preference?
It's, it's underway right now.
Okay, great.
Yeah, yeah, it's underway, I don't have a specific end date to it, but I, I know that they're, that, we hired Libra Cassidy, Whitmore to do it, and they're, they're working on it.
Okay.
I think they need to do some interviews of managers and stuff, but.
That's great.
It's underway, yeah.
Right, thank you. Another question, okay, so that was one, number two regarding the BOLA wrap. Are you going to be providing some information about how that pilot went, and, you know, how useful you found it to be, or just information about that in the report at the end of, or whenever you're bringing that?
I can do it now, real quick.
Whatever you want, yeah.
So we're fortunate that we haven't deployed it a bunch of times. We've deployed it one time, and when we did, the gentleman was standing, there was a fence behind him. So, and it happened so fast, it's hard to see it on the body worn camera, what exactly happened. But it hit the fence, so it, it defeated the wrap, so it didn't wrap the person up. So really, that's our only deployment, which is a, you know, a good thing, that we're not having to deploy it all the time. In my opinion, I think every officer should have it, because it's an opportunity to use a low level of force that doesn't cause injury. I've been BOLA wrapped, it's painless, and it's just a good option for us to have. I think any option that's less lethal, we should have. And right now, just the supervisors have it, and I would just like to see all officers have that tool on them, again, to de-escalate in a way that doesn't injure, hopefully doesn't injure the suspect or the person in mental health crisis that's a danger to themselves or others, or the officer.
All right, thank you. Okay, two down, two to go. Regarding the training for de-escalation implicit bias, is there any way we could include human trafficking training in that? This is something we had to the education committee, there was a person, I gave her contact information, Damian, I think, but I could provide it again, who's willing to do a training, she actually did it with Roanoke Park Police Department.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome.
Yep.
And then my last question regarding the high-low evacuation drill. I was speaking with an emergency manager, person at the county, who I just happened to run into at that event that I saw yet. And talking about emergency, a concern I have is related to if we, there was a massive wildfire that came in and everyone had to leave Katati all at once. Just some of the neighborhoods are kind of tricky to get out of, and I'm wondering how much, related to your questions about evacuation routes, like, what's our capacity to handle all that traffic all at once? And do we really know? And he brought up a great point, which is like, one of the most important things is to make sure we don't have downed trees that are blocking roadways. And so I'm wondering if there's any way to kind of incorporate something about that in the high-low drill? Like a simulated, what if, what if the police car that's doing the sirens comes upon a blockage in the roadway? And how do we, in a, in a real-life situation, how would we address that? And, and could we dispatch somebody to go deal with the tree and clear the roadway? And is there some way to build that into the high-low drill, I guess is my question?
Yeah, I mean, we can explore it, I mean, I think it would most likely be like Public Works or someone like that would be like for a tree removal. But yeah, we'd have to look into, I mean, obviously, wouldn't be a real tree, but like.
Yeah, because some of these catastrophic firestorms happen in high wind conditions, which is when you might see trees coming down too.
Yeah.
So Damian, I have a thought.
Food for thought, that, that was my last question.
No, I, I have, I have something I'd like to share, so perhaps, Councilmember Lemus's concern, and then what you're bringing up, perhaps that we could do a high-low drill and then send out emergency notifications, mock.
Right.
Emergency notifications of a scenario, and we tell Zone Six evacuate, and, you know, East Katati and Zone Two, you evacuate 116 to Stony Point, and so on. So more of a realistic high-low evacuation drill incorporating the evacuation areas and sending people a certain direction with a caveat that they know that that's not always going to be the direction you evacuate.
So it's a community-level drill, incorporating citizens, not just you guys driving around with the high-low siren? It's, here's a scenario, as a community, let's practice, given a scenario.
There's some examples of that too, at the county, we've done them with emergency services in different communities, and so I think on the website, there's some, it doesn't have to be all of Katati, we can pick a certain area and say, okay, neighbors in this area, we're doing a drill. And at this time, the sirens are going to come, and the neighborhood will all drive, exit, go park at, you know, wherever there's a parking lot somewhere. It's going to be our safe spot, and then what they've had is kind of like some, like, police tabling, and, you know, it's kind of different resource tabling, so people can learn more about emergencies. And so that's just an example of something, but I think it would be good to have a combination. Because we're not, you know, we, we haven't had wildfires affect us, you know, that's been a bit more up north. There's been floods, maybe not here, but I think it's better to be prepared and even start with just a small section of Katati to do a drill.
Okay.
Thought of two more, two questions I forgot to ask.
You can ask them.
Okay, thank you. The first, on the, on the camera project with the EV patrol cars, is anybody looking into actually taking advantage of the cameras that are built into the cars? I mean, Teslas have incredible cameras that owners have access to.
Yeah, we were talking about that today, it's funny you say that. Yeah, so the, the EV cameras, I guess in theory, would cover all the different elements, but, but it's not, it's not as, it doesn't have a, one of the benefits of these cameras is that they, they both operate in conjunction with the, with the Axon body cams, and they also upload into, it's what's called evidence.com. It's a cloud, so for, you know, for case prosecution. It's a little bit more streamlined than pulling out the memory card from your glove box and uploading that.
Yeah, no, I, I didn't mean, like, somebody in our department would actually figure out this integration. Clearly, some company is going to have to build an integration of those cameras with Axon or whatever, you know, and, and so I was just curious whether anybody's worked on that.
I, I haven't heard of it yet, but, but yeah, I mean, the new ones, the new, the new Teslas have eight megapixel cameras all around them, which is very high resolution, including in the cabin, so. It's only a matter of time, I imagine.
Okay, thanks. And the other, the other question is just on the accounting of time. You know, your, the police department has budgeted three more FTE than it shows work on the table, so I'm just curious, is there a lot more work that's not being reflected in the time that's on? You showed 19.2 total FTE worth of work and 22 point.
What's that? Yeah, I.
Is that just all the unfilled positions?
It, yeah, it could be, I mean, those are budgeted FTEs, and we've definitely been having some, some staffing, you know, challenges, we're still, we're two, as he said, the chief said, two officers down, and we are down more than that recently, so. That's, that could be it, I don't know for sure, but.
Other questions? Go forth.
Excuse me, sorry to interrupt, Mayor Harvey, there is a hand up on Zoom if we wanted to do public comment.
Certainly.
Speaking to our Zoom attendee, we're going to open up public comment, so Shelley, you have the floor.
Hi, this is not Shelley, this is Adrian Lobby, and I wanted to talk about two things, the new FTE. It sounds like really what we need is some software and some report generating information, processes, rather than someone to actually do it by hand each time around. And so maybe a consultant that could actually just set up, you know, systems so that we can get that data out quickly, just a thought. The other thing I'm even more concerned about is the RIPA numbers. What we see in the most recent one is that the black percentage of our population is 1%, and the black percentage of stops was 6%. So these are kind of big numbers in terms of percentages, and I'm assuming that the chief will talk about it when he does his annual report. I personally would really like to see what the actual numbers are behind that. How many black people are in our population and how many people were stopped? I think that would give us a lot to work with in terms of figuring out how important it is. But it, it seems significant, it's, you know, statistics, like Susan said, it's good to always look into the details, but this is not a small, it's a small difference. That's all, thank you very much.
Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay, and since we opened up public comment on Zoom, do you have any public comment in the audience now? And I will bring it back. Oh, okay.
All right, so this is the point where, is there anything else?
I think we added most of the individual things.
Yeah.
On our way.
Can I go back, since I'm the newbie here? Going back to the object, goals and objectives. I had a question on Goal Five, where it says promote equitable, compassionate health community, that honors diversity. So in my, my questions about how, you know, action item, how we do that, in A, it says greater opportunities in contracting. So I was wondering how that is, I know at a previous meeting, I asked about a contract that had a DBE score, but we don't use DBE in, in our decision-making on contracting. So since that was in there, I was going to ask how, how do we kind of create that kind of opportunity in contracting if we don't use DBE as far as to give, you know, contractors additional points? That was one, yeah, one question I had.
So, yeah, so we do with, with, you know, most of our, in bigger projects have federal money or state money, and we, we incorporate that as part of the, as part of the requirement. But for like all the smaller stuff that we do, it's typically smaller stuff, we don't use DBE, so I, honestly, I don't know kind of where that, what that looks like on the contracting. Because we just contract.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, how other jurisdictions might use that? Because it, it seems like it kind of, I was trying to find a correlation, you know, greater opportunities in contracting towards kind of equity and diversity, and then we're not using DBE in all of our contracting, to kind of assign like an additional score. And I know that you said that we go on lower cost. So it's that balance between trying to offer more diversity contracts and cost, you know, so.
Yeah.
That's something I was wondering, how other jurisdictions might handle that, and.
Well, in our current, like in our current purchasing policy, we have a 5% cost preference for local businesses, but no cost preference for anything else. So that's something, you know, when we engage with the county, they're, that's what they're focused on is, you know, not only the regional cooperative contracting, but also different ways to get, you know, have more opportunities for, you know, women-owned businesses, or, you know, minority-owned businesses, or, you know, whatever, whatever it is that we're looking to promote. So we, yeah, so that, I mean, that's where things stand right now.
So is it in federal, but not in smaller and local projects?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's part of our federal projects, we do it.
Okay. Okay, because that was in there, it kind of seemed like we do, you know, provide kind of in contracting, there's opportunities, but it just kind of is in conflict with the goal, you know, so that's what's kind of questioning that.
Yeah, it's something, I mean, it's something we can look at to, I mean, we're already working with the county on it, but we can also look at it with our, we have to do some procurement policy updates anyway for,
Okay, okay.
For like green, you know, kind of green procurement stuff.
Okay.
For composting, SB 1333.
And then some things I had too, is just I had some notes about language access, like anything that has to do with safety and emergency or public health, that whether it's a social media post or a page, I know we have Google Translate, but it's a little different sometimes to use Google Translate versus having a translated page, because sometimes things are taken, that Google takes things and, you know, it's incorrect a lot of times. So if that could be something that, you know, maybe an IT project or something, that they can kind of go through the pages, and anything around public health, safety, or emergency, it could be like a Spanish version, or, and, and social media posts, et cetera, if that's something that can be done.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we're, we're fortunate that we have Spanish-speaking staff on, you know, here at the city, so that we could potentially do some of those things. I'd have to think about what pages that might be on our website. But at, at a basic level, where we are right now is, with the ad hoc, is we were exploring emergency messaging specifically. This is Nixol and that kind of thing, making sure that it's available in multiple languages. So that's been the focus, in addition to making sure everything else is just translatable through Google Translate on our website, or, you know, any social media platform is going to have its own translation service.
And one of the things that we talked about, you know, based upon that is the time, you know, especially in an emergency, we also don't want to delay getting a message out there. We talked about, you know, getting a message out and then following along, you know, with, yeah, but, you know, that, where's that balance between holding it, getting translation and getting it out, or getting it out and then, you know, we have, finding that right balance? So we're not, you know, kind of waiting.
For, yeah, definitely for emergency messages, the focus is get it out like now, you know, in English and whatever the language we want to get it out in. And so that, that was, that was, that was a focus of what we're talking about. But if I understand you correctly, what you're talking about is pages that are just there, like on the website, and they're always there.
Right, there's pages. I, I haven't done a thorough search of it, but there's pages that are related to like safety or emergency or public health or something, and any of those maybe should have like a translated page or something in there that, that says, you know, here it was, where you can go for more information or something.
And as, so my understanding is that kind of all those tasks related to the ad hoc recommendations currently live in your offices' projects, as they're?
Yeah, I mean, I have, you know, I farm stuff out for other departments to help, help out with them, but basically, I'm coordinating them all, yeah.
Right, right, okay.
All right. If that's it, just a, I was just going to say, just a reminder that the next steps in the budget process are the general fund study session planned for April 4th, same time, same place, and April 18th is the enterprise study sessions and special revenues. And then after those, then we'll be putting together a draft budget for potential adoption. That's it, for me at least, unless you have questions.
And we talked last year about moving to two-year budgets, but we're planning to just do one at this point.
We are, at this time, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? Are we half, all happy? Staff have what they need? Council have given what they're said to give? All right, so then, given that, I will adjourn this meeting at 8:43, thank you.
Recording stopped.
Sorry. Yeah, no kidding.